Call to be in order. Invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you asking a healing prayer for our country. Grant us compassion for those less fortunate. Show us the way to make their lives less difficult and more fulfilling. Strengthen our schools, the teachers, and the students that need your intervention to find ways to improve the many issues that face our students daily. Guide them to know the comfort of your touch and healing hands. Be with the first responders and workers trying to rebuild from a hurricane. Lead the families facing a future of uncertainty as they look for ways to overcome from the devastation. In a world of confusion, disagreement, and division, the only constant is the knowledge of your love for all of your children. Continue to hold us in your hands as we walk through life with the gifts you have given to us. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Item number three, consider approval of the minutes from the September 12th, 2022 recess meeting, September 19th, 2022, regular and closed session meetings.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I have no agenda adjustments. Announced delegations, number four will not be here tonight. Moving on to unannounced delegations, Jake Burr, 1247 Salisbury Avenue, to speak on three different topics. The first one is closed session minutes. I will tell you, we had that discussion last time. Staff is still working on them, and it has been longer than I said. So they are working on getting them to us and will be ringing them to us one year at a time over the next few meetings.
Jake Burr, 1247 Salisbury Avenue. So first item on the public records, as we've talked about before, I've got several public records outstanding, several of them five months old, and I'm asking that council direct staff to get those out. Several of them wouldn't take five minutes, copy, paste, email, but I feel like staff is stonewalling sending these out. And I think it's because of who was sending it or who wants them, but other than that, that's what I want to talk about on that topic, is to direct staff to release those public records that I've asked for. They shouldn't be hard to release. Closed session minutes, the mayor, you kind of got there, but I will ask, when was the last time? That's all I wanted to know.
The last one, I think they found, was 2018.
Twenty eighteen.
Like I said, it's longer than I thought it was.
Okay, thank you. And the very last one is the city manager's disrespect for the public. I think after the last council meeting, and we were all here, you could watch it, I've had several people call me and ask what happened and saw what he did. So, and I emailed all of council, I don't know if you received it or not, but asked for a phone apology and it didn't get it. So I'm asking tonight for a public apology, not only for me, but for all stakeholders involved.
Further comments?
That's it.
Thank you. Moving into administrative reports, Joy Almond, Main Street Manager, to provide updates on the Social District in Cycle North Carolina.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's always a pleasure to keep you up to speed on all of the wonderful things that are happening here in downtown Albemarle. Let's see. Would you prefer the Social District update or Cycle N?
Either one you want to do.
Okay, well, I've got Social District update first on my list.
Cycle North Carolina is on the screen.
Okay, I don't have anything on the screen for Social District. I just have a very quick update. I had applied, I had sent the electronic copies of our Social District paperwork to the North Carolina ABC back in July of 2022. I had reached out to them a couple of other times to get an update, to see if there was anything else they needed. I was having difficulty getting a clear response, so I made a trip to Raleigh Thursday of last week to confirm, had hard copies of the paperwork I have handed over to the person that I needed to speak to in regards to the Social District. So we are now smooth sailing and ready to implement our materials. So now we are working on that process. I do have decals for the businesses to display, different color codes if they plan to participate or not, or if they are an establishment that serves the beverages. And so the other implementation materials are now being ordered. I am in conversation with Kevin Robinson, our planning director, about the placement of trash cans for the boundaries of the Social District. So all of that is now in the works.
Question? So will it be implemented and be able to be this weekend? I mean, this weekend on the eighth is that big Baden Bruce thing.
To my understanding, the event applicant has an ABC permit for that event.
I understand for the event, but what about other businesses that might want to? I mean, there are going to be businesses that are not on First Street that might want to participate.
Correct. I do not feel that Social District will be implemented in time for this Saturday, but I know that businesses outside of First Street benefited from the last festival with the foot traffic. I feel strongly, if it's any indication of the last one, that they will get the foot traffic again. But again, before I put a bunch of money into investing in those implementation materials, I wanted to make sure there was absolutely no question from the ABC Raleigh office. And so going in person, it took me some time to carve out a day to get to drive up there and do it. So that was the factor that was holding us up. So being able to speak to someone directly there and making sure that we were able to move forward, now we're able to get the implementation materials in place.
Thank you. I just, I think for council, and I would speak for council, but knowing that the Baden Bruce October eighth event is coming, I thought that was a relative question that we needed to ask.
Absolutely.
Particularly for folks who are listening or watching.
Absolutely. Also, I do have a one-time permit for anyone needing to know for the next event I'm going to discuss. I do have a one-time special permit for Courthouse Square for the guests of the event that's happening on Wednesday.
When do you look to have your Social District signage?
That depends on when we're able to get, I just had the conversation with Kevin Robinson, our planning director. We're working now on placement of our trash cans. We need to make sure that we have enough. That is what we're using to mark the boundaries. So we are getting that placement worked out. I don't, I would say, I don't see why we couldn't get it done. I mean, would the end of October, would that be reasonable? Understood, okay. And I can always get temporary signage if I need to, to mark those until we get the permanent trash cans. But I do, I want to implement this quickly. It's a very exciting thing for our downtown, so.
I guess the only other question is, is that if we had problems, you sent the information in three months ago, okay?
Right.
If that isn't, if there's an issue between here and the ABC Board, okay, or whomever is having to sign off on this, then somebody needs to make a phone call, because it should not have taken three months and a visit to Raleigh if other places have been able to do it. And I'm just throwing that out there, no fault of ours, but something is not as easy to get done as once we thought it was.
Sure, and I had that conversation with the representative I spoke to at the Raleigh office, and, excuse me, he explained, you know, this is a new process for all of us, not just the municipalities, but also the ABC staff. So it's a learning process for all of us. So I just, I felt better having that peace of mind, seeing someone in person, and so I feel I don't foresee any more issues with moving forward with implementation. So I'm pleased that we were able to get past that little growing pain, and I look forward to moving forward with that. Moving on to Cycle NC, a committee was pulled together by Chris Lambert at Stanley Convention Visitors Bureau to host guests for Cycle NC, which, for those of you who are not aware of what Cycle NC is, it is a statewide cycle tour. It is cyclists that go on a week long ride from the mountains all the way to the coast in North Carolina. It came through Albemarle about, I think, 10 years ago before I was employed here. So it's coming through again. So Chris Lambert has had pulled together a committee with myself, with George Crocker from the YMCA, Toby Thorpe, and Beth Oliveri, who is on the ADDC board. And so we, and Edna Light Parkey, who is a local volunteer and was a former ADDC board member. So Chris has coordinated some activities and an overnight stay for guests of Cycle NC. They will be camping overnight on Wednesday, October 5th, in the YMCA Park. The YMCA Park is making accommodations as well as Stanley CVB. They are providing shuttle service for the guests. We are going to encourage them to visit downtown Albemarle. We have a hospitality table set up at the YMCA Park while the guests are there. We have free gifts that we'll be handing out, especially for Cycle NC guests. We also have activities planned at Courthouse Square Park with live music on the square the evening of Wednesday, October 5th. We have a webpage that, the gentlemen were nice enough to pull here for Cycle NC, and it has got information for our visitors. It has a map of downtown and a list of shops and restaurants that our guests can visit. So we hope to give them a great experience that will, that will make them want to come back and visit us again.
So in the, I think 10 years ago, somebody did a meal. I mean, they could purchase it, if I remember correctly, and I may be dreaming, and I'm looking at Scott Hopkins, because I think it was at Central Methodist Church. Seems like, are they doing a meal that's for purchase this year?
It can be, yes. They do have the option, the cyclists have an option to purchase a meal card. We were told that often they like to visit the local restaurants and see what's there. To my understanding, and again, this is a question for CVB, and I don't want to tell wrong, but to my understanding, they are doing a meal. I'm thinking it's at the Senior Center this year. But again, I'm not 100% aware of where it is, so I don't want to misspeak on that.
And just to follow up, since they're coming downtown for music, has there been a plea for any businesses to remain open on Wednesday evening longer than they normally would?
Yes.
Do they know about it?
Yes, ma'am. I've had conversations with our retailers downtown, also asking them if they offer shipping services. That is something that the Cycle NC guests, obviously if they're cycling, they don't have a whole lot of room to carry things. So that is something that we are encouraging our retailers also to offer as a service.
And I know that you put it out there for volunteer opportunities.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate you signing up.
You're welcome, and I think that there might be other folks that may have missed that, if you want to talk about that for just a second.
Sure, sure. And I think we're mostly covered, but we were looking for a couple of extra hands to help with the hospitality table at the YMCA Park, as well as at Courthouse Square Park for the entertainment for that evening.
But you're covered, you think now?
I think so, yes, ma'am.
Anything further? Thank you very much.
Thank you, always a pleasure.
Thank you, Joy. Moving on to number six, Dr. Kim Scott, Director of Public House, to provide a departmental
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I have about maybe four areas that I'd like to cover with you tonight. The status of the burn units. We have a meeting tomorrow with Wayne Stogner. He wasn't able to make it last week with DWA, but I have a meeting with him to do the final walkthrough tomorrow with the punch list, and tomorrow at 3 o'clock, we should be getting that final clearance to get the letter to send to HUD so that we can get those four units back online, hopefully by the end of this week. The sewer project status, spoke with Wayne Stogner regarding the sewer project. He plans to complete the bid process to repair the units 1507 Inger, 1509 Inger, and 1446 Inger, along with apartments full of 7 through 413 Griggs. Those are by far the worst. He stated that the project should be ready to start within four to five weeks, the bid process. Regarding our appliances, we did have to replace two refrigerators and two stoves that we had issues with, but we do have an order process. We have a process going on where we're looking for some lower quotes, and we've been working with the finance department so that we can address what they need as far as our procurement process. There was a concern about the resident in 1446 who complained about the mold and the backup of the sewage concerns. The maintenance personnel in the process, before we get her moved, we have to actually continually check with her on a weekly basis, two times a week, to go down and make sure that we run something through that system to make sure that it unclogs and does what it needs to do. But we are planning on having her moved. We got our systems up. PIC agrees now with TinMas, the two systems that talk together for HUD. We've gotten them together, we've gotten okay and clearance from HUD to get her into a new unit. Hopefully that will happen by Friday of this week.
One of the burn units?
No, no, one of the units off of South Bell, which is a five-bedroom. And as far as communicating with the residents, we've sent out letters and phone calls, especially to those individuals who will be, we will have to relocate when the processes start for the sewer work. We do, we've called them, we've met with them individually, and also we put information in our newsletter about the work that's going to be going on in the community. So everyone's aware of some timeline of when things are going to start, and we should be in very good shape.
Council, if, I don't know if I told you last time, I don't remember if we talked last time or not, but when Wayne Stogner was here, we learned that the sewers in these units do not go straight out. They actually go inside the apartment from one apartment to another. So when we take an apartment line off-duty, offline to do this, we're going to do the entire building, not just one apartment. We're going to do the entire building at one time. And they've identified 22 units that we will try to do, but if the funding, we don't have enough funding, we may have to back up some, although it might be 18, might be 15. But we're going to do as many as we can, but we'll have to do the entire building at one time, what our plans are. So we are taking care and doing it right. We don't want to piecemeal this thing. We want it done right, so we're not going to have any sewer problems after this. Ms. Hall?
Well, just listening to Dr. Scott, I was writing, I was trying to write as he was speaking, sounds like to me he gave us 10. Sounds like to me he gave us in the sewer project 1507 and nine.
1507, 1509, 1446, and then 407 through 413, which is four units.
Well, 407 through 413 is just four units?
Yes.
So then that sounds like to me that we've only got seven units.
And that's the ones he's going to tackle first.
Yes, those are by far the worst.
Right.
We want to tackle those first.
So we know that there's 20 or 22 out there. Are they not, is he just starting the bid process on those seven?
He said he would get it all together, and we will do, and I don't know what turnaround time is. He said in some locations, he can turn around an entire building in a month. He said it might take two months here. He don't know what we're going to get bid-wise. But we're going to try to turn around and build as quickly, do all the plumbing and all the updates at one time, and then move on to the next one. But he is putting it together. We're fortunate that he actually had a gentleman that was finishing up another project that's going to get on this one quickly, as we eventually thought, and hopefully, like Dr. Scott said, hopefully within five weeks, we're ready to go to bid.
So do we have a place to put seven?
Yes, we have a place already. We've had those apartments already refurbished to go back online so that we can move those individuals. We've already talked to the residents and let them know where they're going to be moving to.
And are those the burn units?
Some, there's three burn units, well, I'm sorry, there's four burn units that we'll use, and then there's two others on Greek Street that we'll use, and then there's another available, two on South Bell, that we are ready to turn around now.
And is one of those going to be for 1446?
Yes.
One of those is, so then the other seven then will be used. So what about, may I, what about when we were over at Waddell, there was someone who needed that, a three-bedroom because of her children's situation and the sleeping situation, and got put back in the spring into a two-bedroom? Is that one of the folks that's going to be moved?
We want to address the individuals with the sewer issues first, and then see what we have left, and then we can start addressing those other particulars.
Because that was a black, that was a black mold issue. I mean, I've got it on my notes.
Right, we moved them out of the one that had the mold issue into two down from where they lived. They're okay, but again, it's about the gender of the children being in certain rooms, yes, and the age.
And they went from a three to a two. Okay. And so the lady that needs the five-bedroom, you're saying that, I mean, we've got one? Is that what I heard you say?
We do have a five-bedroom, but we're having problems getting that five-bedroom back online, because there's a HUD form and a HUD process. It's the HUD 50058 that we have to send the information to HUD. We've already done that, but it has to be taken offline as a family life center and then put back online as a residence.
One second. So did you know about that?
That's the one that he's, the HUD has approved, but he hasn't got the paperwork signed off yet.
And we know that is the family life center. So I, but I knew we had the family life center, but I didn't know there was another one out there. And so when you were talking about it, paying attention again, I'm thinking, wait a minute, this is the first time I've heard of a five-bedroom except for the family life center. So I just want to make sure that I was on the same page.
Yeah, I'm talking about the family life center.
Okay, okay, got you. That, I understand that part now, because I knew that that's what we were trying to do.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Move on to the consent agenda, resolution 2234, setting of a public hearing to consider a petition for voluntary annexation of 29.88 acre parcel on St. Martin Road and Highway 2427, bypass West, number 2206. Mr. Ferris, are we pulling, or Ms. Britt, are we pulling number nine since the issue, are we going to go set the public hearing and then see where we need to pull it?
So I would pull it all together so we don't advertise and have to re-advertise, and just put the resolution in front of council once we know for certain that any agreement beforehand are.
And I'll explain that to council in just a minute.
So before we go on past number eight, I'm fine leaving it on consent, but in the management recommendation, if you open the packet, it mentions a public hearing on November 11th, 22, in the actual cover, and everything is set, there's just a typo, I believe, but since this becomes part of the public record, I would like for it to be correct. If you open up the cover sheet, management recommendation, do you see that?
I was looking at the dates, it should be November 14th.
No, it should be November 7th.
Seven.
And that's what's in the description, but in the management recommendation, it mentions the 11th.
All right.
So just for correction.
Well, let's go ahead and handle that then, with that motion, if you would.
Just for number eight?
Yeah, just go ahead and move for number eight, since you've got a correction to make.
So move, then I would take number eight off the consent agenda and on its own, set the public hearing for the seven.
For November the seventh. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And we said we're going to pull number nine. Number 10, resolution 2236, to adopt my future North Carolina efforts for education. Number 11, road closure for a charity motorcycle ride benefiting the elderly. And number 12, consider alternate dates for the January 2023 council meetings.
I'd ask that we pull number 12 and do it individually.
Then I'll entertain a motion that we approve number 10 and number 11.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, consider alternate dates for January 23rd, 2023, in council meetings, both the January, first meeting in January and the second meeting in January have holidays on the first, so we need to move until the next day, if that's council's wishes.
Or I have a proposal that we, there are five Mondays in January, so there are five weekends, if you will, in January, and I would propose that instead of using the 2nd and the 16th, or that following Tuesday, that we just do a complete week and do the 9th and the 23rd for our two meetings in January.
Is that a motion?
I would make that in such of a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council number nine, we realize there was a possible conflict that we need to resolve with the town of New London over a sphere of influence where this property is. So we need to get that resolved before we set that public hearing and move forward. Moving in the new.
So what are we doing with that? Are we just holding it?
We're just pulling it off for now until we know, until we resolve that. New business, number 13, League Municipalities ARPA session. Mr. Ferris has provided you with all the information that was handed out that day, and do you have any comments, Mr. Ferris, or is that Ms. Hall?
I don't have any comments.
Ms. Hall?
I just, I did ask that you all get a copy of this, and it is long, it's a very long presentation, but I would respectfully ask that if you've not looked at it, that you at least run through the slide presentation. We, the parts of the slides that I particularly would ask you to look at are the slides from Greensboro, Lewisville, and Burlington. Those were the other three municipalities that were, that presented what they had done. I just, and again, I would reiterate that this money does not need, have to be spent until, you know, December 26th. We need to take our time and do this, do it after giving it some good thought. So I would just ask that you look through that and pay attention to what other folks are doing and how they're doing it. It was in Greensboro, and I was asked by the league to come talk about Albemarle. The mayor was not able to join us from Greensboro, but I will quote what the mayor pro temp said in her remarks from the mayor, that this again is a once-in-a-lifetime chance for us to make a difference with some money. So thanks, and I appreciate Michael and Cindy holding that with a placeholder, Cindy, because when I asked for a copy of the presentation last week, she had not yet sent it, and then it did get sent. So thanks so much for that.
Further comments, questions? Moving on to number 14, an update on Peel scooters. Ms. Hall, I believe you asked for that one.
I just, I know we got it signed last meeting, but I continue to see them out there like, like what'd you see just a minute ago?
There's three or four of them in the parking lots out here on the sidewalk, and some of them are not licensed.
Not old enough to have a license, is that what you're saying?
Right.
I just think that we've got to pay attention to them, because, I mean, I see them everywhere. Don't know if, if in our agreement, Britt or Michael, are they reporting to us? Are they giving us anything on a routine basis?
So quarterly, they're going to give us kind of statistics on usage, as well as how many people contact them for customer support or issues, so that first report should be coming in December.
In December?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just open it for other council members to make comments.
Further comments?
I'll just add that I think the individuals that we've seen out here, them children, they were with their parents, though, you know, although they did ride on the sidewalk.
Yeah, they were with their parents.
In front of the city hall, they were with their parents right over here on the side by the church. I think the parents were trying to let them ride in the parking lot to, I guess, get a better feel for the scooters. I noticed that when I got out my vehicle.
Yeah, but the parents were riding on sidewalks.
Further comment? Moving in, coming around the table, Mr. Aldrich.
No, sir, no comment.
Mr. Townsend.
Well, I know it's late in the ballgame, and I kind of hate, I was on vacation last week and then actually sent an email prior to this agenda, but I wish we would have in some way acknowledged the 100-year celebration for Albemarle High School football this.
Is it this weekend?
This Friday.
So if we can't do a council resolution, maybe a mayor proclamation or something just to recognize.
I would be glad to, if somebody would get me some information.
We could just do a resolution. Can we not do a resolution?
Well, we don't have, we don't have one before, is this Friday?
Well, I mean, if we, one could be written, I mean, and presented to them on Friday night.
Well, I don't know if we want to interfere. Well, I don't know if we want to interfere with their festivities at the ballgame.
We just need to recognize the school.
At least recognize them from an official standpoint, with that being the only high school in the city limits.
If some of, some of you will get me some information, I'll be glad to do something. Get it to Mr. Ferris or Sandy one, and we'll get it together. Anything further?
That's it.
Mr. Ferris?
Just want to say thank you to all the city employees that worked in terms of prepping for the hurricane Ian. I don't know that we actually had them or not, but I know there were tropical storm force winds projected for Albemarle, and whatever the wind speed was, those were pretty strong winds. I think we did dodge a little bit of a bullet with the rain and whatnot, but you don't know what you're going to have until it's here or not. But beyond that, what we could control was our preparation and our management of the situation and recovery. And it takes a lot of people all across the city. Some people you see, some people you don't see, but they're all working to make this recovery and preparation efforts happen. And this process went very smoothly, and appreciate the public's patience with recovery as well. I think most people understand that's a pretty serious event for us. We're fortunate it wasn't what they had in Florida. But when you throw in that kind of wind with the science trees we have here, that could be quite a challenge. So there were a lot of hard work, long hours put into it, and I just want to thank everybody, both on staff and in the public.
Also, I'll echo that to all of our staff, because it was a hard situation to be away from your family during those hours, I'm sure, but thank you very much for all that you did for the city. Ms. Hall?
Just a reminder that this is Public Power Week, and that there are going to be several opportunities for the community and the citizens to take part in that. This Friday night is our last Food Truck Friday at City Lake Park, and they're doing a couple of things that night. There'll be a lighter, there'll be candle, candles around the, is that what it is? What is it? Lanterns. Lanterns on the lake. There's, city's going to be there with Public Power Week. You may have all seen, or may not have seen, because of Friday was so crazy, the league report on Friday is that the power money has been released. So we ought to be getting some power money to be able to put, get some paving down. I did go to the goal-setting meeting week before last. Sad to say, it is very, the attendance is very low, very, very low. There are some virtual opportunities if folks wanted to take part in it, but that just has not been a great, a lot of people taking part. Again, thanks to folks preparing for and taking care of this weekend. I know it was employees from all of our different departments. And just, I'll just, that's all I'll do. I'll mention this other individually.
Mr. Whitley?
I'd just echo the comments on the hurricane. I think we're very fortunate it wasn't any worse. I was looking at social media and some of the other areas around the county apparently had power out a lot longer than we did. So I think our response towns were really good. That's a credit to, to our employees. And I don't, have we been requested to send anybody anywhere?
To Florida?
Any crews?
Michael?
I haven't received an request. Have you received anything, Jay?
No, we haven't. They have nothing west cities that are being sent over. At least five municipalities are finished, all over. I think that's right now.
Mr. Dry?
Echo what everybody said, staff, we appreciate you. I know it's hard to be away from your families, and it, thank goodness, it wasn't like we've had previously, but I think we all know that we're in good hands, and we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you so much.
Just an attaboy to, to whomever with Kevin, your department, the house that got taken down on North Second Street. So, I mean, that was a lot of folks doing a lot of work and getting it down. Any update on Baden Road? So...
Let me repeat that for, since he's not near the microphone. It was asked about the houses on Baden Road at the corner of Baden Road and Spate Road, and Mr. Robinson said that it has been turned over to the fire department all day. As best as abatement has occurred, we don't have a date yet of when they will burn it.
And any, any others turned over to the fire department today? Because there are people that ask me all the time, well, so when's his house?
Yeah, we got four of the other ones that we're already, we've already given them. We don't have, I don't think we have dates on those yet either, but...
But they're good. They're clean. They're ready to be...
They're right, they're ready to go. They've been abated and everything, and ready to just be burned.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting on October 17th, 3:30 p.m. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.